Well, it looks like we have a quorum, so let's get started. We're waiting for Ms. Davis, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we get started? It looks like we have a quorum, so we can go ahead and get started, and she'll join us while she can. So it's four forty, oh, four forty, and Ms. Bittersmith is winging her way back from Washington DC as we speak. So this is Dr. Marini, and I'll be in charge of the meeting today. We are live captioning our meeting, so please look at your chat windows of your WebEx meeting, where you will find a link. Please check on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. At this time, I'd like to call to order the special session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of June eleventh, twenty twenty four. For the record, I'll call row of the roll, call vote for the board members. I'll start with our student trustee, Mr. Burnett.
I'm here.
Ms. Butler? He's not with us. Ms. Davis, are you here with us yet? Ms. Smith?
Present.
Ms. Sullivan?
Present.
Dr. Thor?
Present.
And myself. So that's four, so Ms. Davis will get on, and she'll let us know when she's here. The special session regarding the charter school budgets, Dr. Gonzalez, would you like to introduce our presenters for tonight, or presenter for tonight?
Yes, Dr. Marini, we have Stacy Boyd, who should be with us, and he would also be joined by each of the respective presidents, Gateway and Phoenix College. So kind of introducing them for both items two and three, but I know he'll take it an item at a time here, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you.
And thank you. President Bittersmith, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC, college presidents and guests, my name is Stacy Boyd. I am the superintendent for Gateway Early College High School and Phoenix College Preparatory Academy. Today, I would like to present our budget moving into the fiscal year twenty twenty five, and I would like to start off with Gateway Early College High School, if you don't mind. Next slide, please. Gateway Early College High School class of twenty twenty four highlights, we had sixty nine graduates, twenty one of the graduates with, graduated with an AA or AS degree. We also encountered two point three million dollars in scholarships, which is extremely awesome. That's a little higher than it was last year. We have a ninety nine percent graduation rate. Unfortunately, one of our students did not graduate and had to attend summer school. So by the end of the summer, we'll have a hundred percent graduation rate as well, and we have a hundred percent college acceptance rate. And what's not on here is that we are an A school rated by the Department of Education. Next slide, please. So comparing the FY twenty four budget with the twenty five budget, the enrollment is three hundred and forty five. The average daily membership based on attendance was three hundred and thirty five for twenty twenty four. We are looking again at three forty five. That is conservative. We are definitely looking to have a enrollment of three hundred and fifty five by our ten day audit. The state-based funding per pupil is approximately four thousand nine hundred dollars. Additional assistance per the state is two thousand, approximately two thousand dollars. That's been consistent over the past two years. Unfortunately, we had an additional one-time state aid supplement for twenty twenty four. We will not receive that, that, that funding source for twenty twenty five. So there's a ninety six thousand dollar decrease in our budget. Prop three oh one per pupil has gone up by thirty four dollars, not much, but it'll help later on, as I'll explain that shortly. Next slide, please. Thank you. Again, based on the impact of Gateway Early College High School state-based funding, it has gone down. But that's based upon the formula that's used by Department of Education, which encompasses ELL students, special education students, and our free and reduced lunch qualifiers. Anytime that the enrollment shifts in those particular categories, it can go up or down. Additional assistance will stay the same, which all of that is part of our total equalization, which is approximately three thousand seven hundred, oh, sorry, three thousand, three, three million, sorry, three point two million. Moving into the two thousand twenty five year, it's going to be three point one million. That's a hundred and forty four thousand dollar decrease. I'll continue to calculate that as we move through the PowerPoint. We will receive prop three oh one monies. That is a small increase. Instructional improvement will remain the same. The total state funding is three point six million for twenty twenty four, three point four million for twenty twenty five. As you can see, based upon our federal aid, Title One, Two, and Four has decreased. Unfortunately, there's a ten percent decrease in the federal funding budget, which is going to affect us tremendously. The S R two and S R three ends in twenty twenty four, so we won't receive those monies either, which was based off of COVID. So our total budget revenue in twenty twenty four is four point five. Twenty twenty five will be three point seven, which is a difference of approximately three hundred, seven thousand nine, seven hundred and ninety three thousand dollars, my apologies. So that's a huge difference. So we're trying to operate within a smaller budget. However, trying to ensure all of our students meet their minimum graduation requirements. Next slide, please. Thank you. So other elements that contribute to our budget, again, the ADM is three hundred and thirty five students currently. We're projected at three forty five. We currently are working on a campaign to increase that so that we can pad our budget. Additional staff hiring to account for continued increase of enrollment, and we're really targeting, currently targeting teachers who are dual enrolled certified or who can become dual enrolled certified, which would help with the budget as well. We currently have twenty special education students and forty four ELL students. So again, we need to provide additional services for them as well. All of our charter schools, all of our charter school staff are receiving salary increases or stipends based upon the fiscal year twenty twenty five approved salary plan. This is something that I want everyone to keep in mind, because it's important that we're cognizant that we don't operate on the same budget as, as the district office or the colleges. So I have to be stringent on what I'm looking at and take a deeper dive into our budget prior to offering the COLA increases. So I, I'm cognizant of that, but at the same time, I also want to ensure that we're competitive as we are hiring new teachers. So we are going to participate in the approved salary plan for the FY twenty five school year. Our budgets also include three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars in college tuition and twenty five thousand dollars in college books. Any questions? All right, that concludes the presentation for Gateway Early College High School. Next slide, please. I will apologize now for the redundancy. But unfortunately, I'm presenting for both schools. Before I begin the budget for Phoenix College Preparatory Academy, I'm excited to announce that on both campuses, we have new principals coming in. Phoenix College Preparatory Academy has a new principal that started in April, and Gateway Early College High School's new principal will begin on July first. Next slide, please. Thank you. So Phoenix College Preparatory Academy class of twenty twenty four highlights. There are fifty seven graduates, twenty three graduates who received their AA or AS degree. They received one point five million in scholarships and grants, ninety six percent graduation rate, and a hundred percent college acceptance rate. We also had a student who was nominated for the U.S. Presidential Scholarship, which is the national's most prestigious academic award for a high school graduate. The requirements are a minimum of a two twenty five on ACT score and a three point five grade point average. That same student wrote and composed a piece that was called Heroes of the Past, which was pretty awesome. I'm not eclectic in my music, but I definitely listened, and the music was beautiful. We recently had a graduate, what we called the triple threat, who received her high school diploma, an AA degree, and an AS degree. So honors to her. Next slide, please. Thank you. Enrollment for PCPA, two hundred and fifty students. That's for the most part our max. As of now, we're looking logistically to support additional growth. The ADM was two hundred and forty four, but again, we're looking at two hundred and fifty cap, which helps support our budget. State-based funding per student is four point, oh, sorry, four, four thousand, almost five thousand dollars. Additional assistance per student stays the same at approximately two thousand. Additional assistance from one-time state aid is seventy one thousand for twenty twenty four. Again, unfortunately, we will not receive that one-time aid supplement funding unless the state decides to renew. And we'll see what that looks like in July. Prop three oh one per student, again, it's seven hundred and fifty eight last year, seven ninety two this year, which is a thirty four dollar difference that will help support our COLA increase. Next slide, please. Thank you. State-based funding has decreased, and again, that's based upon the ELL and sped population in addition to the free, free and reduced lunch qualifiers. Additional assistance will remain the same. The estimated problem, estimated proposition one, two, three has gone up approximately seventy five dollars. Again, helpful. Total state equalization is two point three million for twenty twenty four, two point two million for twenty twenty five. Again, instructional improvement, nine thousand is stayed the same. One-time state aid, we will lose, which gives us a total state funding of two point six thousand for twenty twenty four and two point five thousand for twenty twenty five. Going down to total budget revenue, again, I'll go back up. Federal, federal monies again is ten percent decrease, which also means that we're going to receive less for Title One, Two, Four, and IDEA. S R two and S R three will be depleted at the end of twenty twenty four, which I believe is September. The total budget revenue for twenty twenty four is three point one million, twenty for twenty twenty four, two point seven million for twenty twenty five, and that is a four hundred and thirty six thousand dollar decrease. Next slide, please. So again, other elements that contribute to the FY twenty five budget, ADM is two hundred and forty one students currently, twenty twenty five is projected at two fifty. PCPA has thirteen special education students and twenty ELL learners. Again, we will participate in the FY twenty five COLA increases. PCPA has spent one hundred and thirty four thousand dollars for college tuition and fifteen thousand dollars for college books. I can say that we spent more than that. We're looking, we had to use some of the rollover monies, and we're looking to do a cost transfer, transfer. That concludes the budget analysis presentation for Phoenix College and Gateway Early College High School. Do we have any questions?
Awesome. Dr. Marini, this is Linda Thor. My question is, can you, you talk a little bit about what general strategies you're using to accommodate the reduced revenue at both high schools?
Yes, ma'am. So as of right now, both schools are participating in a campaign, a recruiting campaign. So we're introducing ourselves, something that we had not done, but we started introducing ourselves in January of this year. But we're going out and campaigning the middle schools in our general areas. Gateway Early College High School has done such a great job in that, that we partnered with Tillman Middle School, and this will help answer some of the question. We partnered with Tillman Middle School, and they took to us so well that one of their funders has decided that anyone who graduates from Gateway Early College High School or Camelback will go to college for free based up on their foundation. Phoenix College Preparatory Academy with the new principal has been beating the streets with the social worker, going out, introducing themselves, and passing out pamphlets. The idea is to increase the enrollment as best as we can to increase our revenue. For Phoenix College Preparatory Academy, we've also worked with, collaboratively with the faculty of Phoenix College to change from a traditional high school schedule to a block schedule, which allow us to leverage additional college courses so that we can increase our enrollment. Unfortunately, the space on the PCPA campus, max, max is out at two hundred and fifty students, and we now will be able to, at least twenty four, twenty five, twenty twenty five, will be able to increase our enrollment using classes over at Phoenix College. So between that, in addition to the idea that, something we did not do in the last ten years that I know of. If any student fails a college course, we've traditionally paid for it the second time. We no longer do that. There's a contract that states that if you fail a course, you're responsible for that course. We're hoping that we will not have to continue to put out so much money in that college fund budget that it, you know, we can recoup some of the funding there as well. I hope I answered your question. Absolutely.
You did. Thank you. That was very helpful.
Thank you.
Dr. Marini, this is Donna Davis, and I have a question as well.
Okay. Yes, welcome, Donna. Please.
Sorry, I was late to the party. So, but when I looked at the budget, I was curious how your budget is decreasing, and then staff is getting an increase in pay, which I think is great. But boy, you've got the secret sauce somewhere. I, I'm not understanding how that's happening.
May I apologize who asked the question? I apologize.
Donna Davis.
Okay, so I'm going to go through this whole thing. President Bittersmith, board member, Ms. Davis, there we go. I've been practicing that. So that, so that, that is something that is extremely hard. You know, we, we want to ensure that our teachers are paid and that we are attractive, we're attracting good talent, you know, when we have to backfill a position. We're currently using our prop through our one monies to supplement the COLA increases. Unfortunately, I'm unable to do so through equalization, but I can, because that's restricted funding, and it's made exactly for that, to supplement increases, to give a teachers, give teachers additional pay. So as I continue to look at that, it increased by thirty four dollars. We do have, we, we wrote a prop through a one proposal that allows us to give an increase for about one, one more year. After that, I had mentioned in the presentation that we're really going to have to take a deep dive, because I don't believe that we're going to be able to continue providing an increase at the rate in which we're giving them. And I also mentioned that, you know, we have to be cognizant that the school budget is different from the Maricopa budget. So I have to really be diligent in how the money is, is spent. Hello?
Did that answer your question, Ms. Davis?
Yes, it did, and I'm sorry if I asked a question that you had already explained.
Oh, no, not at all, and thank you for asking. I appreciate that.
Were there any other questions? Dr. Marini?
Dr. Marini, this is Linda Thor again. So the, the response that you just gave about the COLA, is there anything in the board's compensation philosophy that is requiring you to give a COLA?
So President Sullivan, Board Member Thor, no, and, and I'll put it this way, we're specially funded, so specially funded gives us the out. So if we do not have the funding source to provide the COLA increase, I can personally request that we not move forward with that. Mentioning again that based up on the, I'm going to go with the algorithm that is used, because it can either be a stipend or it can be an increase in pay. I don't anticipate, based upon the formula, I don't anticipate that we would be able to move forward with COLA increases after the FY twenty five increases. But we'll have to take a look and see what that looks like after this increase. We've attempted to move forward the last three years. And if you go back the last five years with the Red for Ed movement, in addition to the COLA increases, it's been a substantial amount. But at the same time, again, we try to take a deeper look at that, because we want our teachers to feel acknowledged and welcomed and, and appreciated. And I think most people who are caring feel that way if they don't get the money. So again, we try to provide them, provide opportunities for it, but we're using the prop three oh one monies a hundred percent to support the COLA increases.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Dr. Marini, this is Kim Grunio. Can I jump in here for just a second?
Yes, please.
Thank you so much. Dr. Marini, members of the board, one thing I do want to make sure everybody understands, it is in the language of the board item, the narrative there, but we're also using information that does not have the approved state budget yet. So per the instructions from the Auditor General's Office, we are using the most recent forms that they've issued, which is what you see in front of you or within board docs. We will then have until September to come back to the board with any budget amendments that are necessary based on what actually gets passed by the state as the budget. They are, of course, supposed to have that done by June thirtieth. Should that budget pass between now and June twenty fifth for the regular board meeting, we will not be able to change the budget documents. For that, we're required to have the same exact proposed budget as adopted budget for the cycle that they request. But what we will do is, once that budget, once the state budget is finalized, and we know if they've made any funding changes, which may impact largely what we've presented today, we'll make sure that we get that information out to the governing board as well. So right now, we're, like many other areas, being held hostage a little bit by the lack of a state budget. So we're presenting the information we have available to us today, but just know that that could change going forward into actual fiscal year twenty five. Thank you for that opportunity, Dr. Marini.
Thanks for the clarification. That's, that's great.
Thank you, Kim.
So having heard the information pertaining to Gateway, Gateway Early College High School budget for twenty four, twenty five, I'd like to consider approval of the proposed budget. Do I have a motion to approve the proposed budget for Gateway Early College High School fiscal year twenty, twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five?
This is Ms. Sullivan. Yes, I so move.
Is there a second?
Second, it's Donna Davis.
Okay, the motion was performed by Ms. Sullivan and seconded by Ms. Davis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Five, any opposed? So as a vote of five, zero, the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five proposed budget for Gateway Early College High School has been approved. Having heard the information pertaining to Phoenix College Preparatory Academy budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five, I would like to consider approval for that, for the proposed budget, by the motion to approve the proposed budget for Phoenix College Preparatory Academy for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
So move.
Whoops. Okay, Ms. Davis, and seconded by?
Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So five to zero, it passes.
Thank you.
So would members of the board approve to use an electronic signature on the approval, on the approved fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five budgets for Gateway College High School and Phoenix College Preparatory Academy?
Yes.
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 All right, all right. Adoption of said budgets and opportunity for public comment will take place on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, the regular meeting of the governing board. This ends our special session. We are now adjourned at five oh five. Oh. And now we get to move on to our regular meeting. For the agenda review tonight, we have a few guests, Dr. Deborah Harding, DPAA of Chandler Gilbert Community College, for Dr. Greg Peterson, president, Mr. Aziz Alhake, student, service director, international education for Mason Community College as a subject matter expert. At this time, I call to order the agenda review meeting for the Maricopa Community College District Governing Board of June eleventh, twenty twenty four. Today will review the agenda for June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four board meeting. Roll call for the record, I'll call row of the board members. I'll start with Mr. Burnett. Present. Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Present.
Ms. Sullivan?
Here.
Dr. Thor?
Present.
Ms. Bittersmith is not with us, and Ms. Butler is not with us, is that? Okay, so there's five board members here. So consideration of the consent agenda, we'll adopt the Gateway Early College High School proposed budget fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, and we'll move on to adopt the Phoenix College Preparatory Academy proposed budget for twenty fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five. We'll move on to consider the approval of acceptance of transfer funds for the Maricopa Community College District Foundation Award by amendment by the Nina Mason Fumian Charitable Trust of the Nina Mason Fumian Legacy Scholars Programs in the amount of five hundred and forty seven thousand, two hundred and ninety five dollars for the period of July first, twenty twenty four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. Any questions on that? Next, moving on, was a placeholder to approve the acceptance of a new grant award from the U.S. Department of State through the North, Northern Virginia Community College to Mason Community College in the amount of one hundred and eighty eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty two dollars to support renewed participation in the Community College Initiative Program from July first, twenty twenty four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Any questions or comments? We'll move on to approval of acceptance to continuing grant from the U.S. Department of Education for year three of the South Mountain Community College Trio Upper Bound Program in the amount of three hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and five dollars for the period from nine one twenty twenty four to eight thirty one, twenty twenty five. Any questions or comments? Move on to the approval of acceptance of continuing grant from the U.S. Department of Education to Gateway Community College for fiscal year twenty twenty four of the trio program, upper, the trio upper bound program from September first, twenty twenty four to August thirty first, twenty twenty five, in the amount of three hundred and twenty four thousand, nine hundred and sixty two dollars. Questions or comments? We will move on to approval of acceptance of a new cooperative agreement award from the Department of Defense to the Maricopa County Community College District for the Apex Accelerator Program in the amount of three hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and three cents for the period of seven twenty one, twenty twenty four through three thirty one, twenty twenty five. Questions or comments? There'll be acceptance of the subaward agreement from the University of Arizona to the
from the University of Arizona to the Maricopa County Community College District in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and ninety seven dollars for the leveraging insights to strengthen regional talent and opportunities in this program at Estrella Mountain Community College for the period of eight, one, twenty twenty three through seven, thirty one, twenty twenty eight. Questions or comments? Item ten will have, there's a placeholder to approve the acceptance of a new grant from the Charles Carl D. Perkins, a five basic grant from fiscal year two thousand and twenty four to two thousand and twenty five from the Arizona Department of Education in the amount of two million, one hundred thousand dollars. Questions or comments? Move on to item eleven, approval of the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Phoenix and the Maricopa County Community College District on behalf of Phoenix College to offer business and interpretive preparation courses to the city of Phoenix employees. Questions or comments? Item twelve will be the approval of marketing, social media platform expenses in the amount up to three million dollars for both district-wide marketing campaigns and individual college marketing needs for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four, twenty twenty five. Questions or comments? Item thirteen, approval of expenditure of the funds for the printing and mailing of publicity pamphlet for November fifth, two thousand and twenty four general election expenditure limit limitation base reset. Question, not to exceed one million, five hundred thousand dollars. Questions or comments? Item fourteen, approve, approval to issue chart change order number two for the GCON Inc. in the amount of two million, five hundred and sixty seven thousand, five hundred and thirty six dollars and twenty five cents for the expansion and remodel of the Aviation Hangar Building at the Chandler Gilbert Community College William Campus. Project budget of one million dollars. Questions or comments? Number fifteen, approval of employee vision insurance provider recommendation. Questions or comments? Item sixteen, approval of maintenance contract award with the estimate, estimated total annual maximum district-wide expenditure of three hundred and thirty two thousand, three hundred and seventy two dollars and thirty three cents to Johnson Controls Inc. to provide multiple-year contract for Central Plant Chiller Annual Preventive Maintenance Service, RFP number thirty five, fifty dash nine. Questions or comments? Number seventeen, approval of curriculum item courses modifications twenty seven, new three and deletions thirty one, occupational programs modifications nine, new five, deletions forty eight, academic programs modifications forty and deletions three. Any questions or comments? Well, I have a question or comment for that. And my question is, I've noticed that this associate's degree for community health, eighty one, forty five. We've got that down as a, as a modification and we have that down as a deletion. Do we know which one that is?
Dr. Narini, let me see if Dr. Armour is able to respond to that. We also have a Mr. Robert Peterson. I'm not sure if he, if he's available to answer as well.
Thank you.
Dr. Narini, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of CEC. This is Lisa Armour. I will be happy to look into this and report back to you. I don't have the details in front of me just now. And informing that answer, I can coordinate also with Robert Peterson.
So just to be sure, it's the associate's degree eighty one, forty five, associates in arts emphasis in community health on the sheet at page fifty five. And then again, on page ten of the, of the sheet, as a deletion, your same associates of arts and emphasis in community health.
Yes, I took those notes down, Dr. Narini, and I will coordinate with all parties and get an answer for you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. So moving on, we've got item eighteen, the approval of the updated vision, mission and values for St. Martin Community College. Move on to number nineteen, approval of updated mission for vision, values, mission, vision and values for Chandler Gilbert Community College. Any questions on either of those? Then we move on to item twenty, approval of the designation to Kimberly Grunio, Kimberly Grunio, Vice Chancellor of Business Services CFO to certify expenditure limit reports for fiscal year two thousand and twenty four, twenty twenty five. Any questions or comments? And finally, item twenty one, an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona, office of the governor, for the activities of the Behavior Health Workforce Demonstration Pilot Program in the amount of three billion, four hundred thousand dollars. Are there any questions or comments on any of the consent item, consent agenda items? Okay, then we move right along to the non-consent items. We have a second read and adoption of staff policy proposals regarding salary administration. Eight forty one, eight forty two, classification and employment mobility, C nine deduction in force. Are there any questions or comments? From there, we'll move on to the first read and information. Employment and separations, April twentieth, two thousand and twenty four through May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four. Any questions or comments? And we move right along to, there's a placeholder for the budget analysis report on one, general unrestricted funds. Any questions or comments? Then we come to the fun part of the governing board reports, the current event summaries and the board members. Once we do that, we establish the next meeting dates and times. And the next meeting will be August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four, the governing board retreat at nine AM to four PM with executive sessions, not a public meeting regarding the chancellor's evaluation, location to be determined. August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four, agenda review meeting at four thirty at the conference center at Rio Salado College. August twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, the regular board meeting at six thirty PM at the conference center at Rio Salado. Then we move on to the adjournment. Thank you, everyone. Is there any questions or comments before we go? In that case, we'll adjourn this at five, seventeen PM.